I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you're welcome. We need to start with a roll call. Ms. Harris, will you help us with that?
Sure. Everyone is present and we do have a form.
Excellent, thank you. We have an agenda before us, is there any changes to that agenda that we need to consider before we approve it? I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Mr. Welling. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Sellers, seconding. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? We have an agenda. City Council minutes for August 15th. Any concerns regarding those minutes? If not, we will acknowledge those as they've been prepared and we'll go on to the bills. Questions, comments, concerns?
Sounds like somebody has a concern.
Scared me there first. Is there a motion to approve the bills?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Lynch. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And seconding. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved. We'll go on to the revenue and expenditure report for June. Same thing there, any questions or comments regarding that report? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Mr. Welling. Is there a second?
I'll second, Your Honor.
Mr. Perks, seconding. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That's approved as well. Council comments. Mr. Lynch. Is there a mind denying? Nothing. Mr. Lynch?
A few things. I wanted to thank the community for how many people showed up to the Labor Day Parade. That was pretty amazing considering the weather was pretty poor, pretty poor. And is Rocco here? I was gonna see what he thought about that Wyoming game. Not everything's better in Texas. Pretty good win for Wyoming. And I want to say the high school sports are in full swing, so get out there and support your high school and middle school athletes.
Excellent. Yeah, thank you. Mr. Perks.
I have nothing.
Good.
Just a couple of things. The Cowboy Days Committee did a wonderful job organizing and reorganizing and the weather, every time it threw a wrench in their way, they found a way around it, so that was pretty impressive. The bleachers are fantastic. I don't know if you had a chance to go sit in them, but boy, they were nice. So it was money well spent, lot of comments, lot of positive comments. But yeah, kudos to them and Cowboys and hopefully Evanston will get a win this weekend, so. You're open. So that's all.
Excellent. Sellers.
I'd like to start off by wishing my wife a very happy birthday. Since today is her birthday, I don't want to forget that. So she still puts up with me even as she ages and...
As she ages, you don't? What's that?
No, 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 as we age, I should say. As I get more set in my way, she still puts up with me.
This is recorded. Might be broadcast to the world.
I want to stop on your hand.
So I just want to also thank, echo everybody and thank the Cowboy Days, all the activities. I thought they were really good. I was surprised, I'm involved in the pancake breakfast with the Rotary and we were sure, but we had like 220 people come out and so that was even well attended, people eating pancakes in the rain. I just want to remind people also that school's in session and those flashing lights that say 20 miles an hour for a reason. I see people going a little faster than that through them at times and going around me when I'm doing 20 and they go around me pretty quick and we just don't need, we don't need a small one squished on the rug.
Higginman, please.
I'm following Jesse's lead. The parade was amazing to take part of. The weather did not dampen the enthusiasm and my favorite part was seeing all the future small city council women scrambling for candy. That was fun and representing and though the one thing I thought was missing, besides the two obvious, right in the middle and down at the end over there, was, you know, it takes a village to raise a child, but it also takes a huge effort on behalf of so many in this building in particular to, with the city council. And so the next time we do a city council float, I think Trudy, I saw you there with your grandson, you need to be up there taking credit and Diane and Mark and everybody here needs to be up there that make this body of government work and work so well.
Thank you. I'll just say that I congratulate the Cowboy Days Committee on another successful Cowboy Days event and the bleachers that I know that the crews that put the bleachers together worked tirelessly it seemed for the last, well, probably since the beginning, but anyway, they worked very hard to get that done, to get those put together. I think obviously they were adequate for the event and so I don't know if they're done completely just yet or not, but I suspect they will be. They were there. As far as the parade goes, I apologize for not being in it myself. I had planned to be there, but I got pulled into the need to provide some service on our ambulance crew, on our ambulance service. And I was called to go to Salt Lake early that morning on an ambulance transfer, so that's why I was not in the parade. I apologize for that, but hope you'll indulge me in that this year. And so that's, with that, we'll move on to public hearings and special orders and our beginning item there is a public hearing regarding liquor license. Mr. Harris, will you help us with that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Mark Harrison, the Evanston City Attorney. I'll be conducting the public hearings tonight. The purpose of this hearing is for the city council to receive evidence regarding renewal of liquor licenses or from the city of Evanston specifically for all retail, limited liquor licenses, restaurant licenses, bar and grill and resort licenses issued by the city of Evanston. The applications for the licenses for renewal have been received by the city clerk's office and the staff of the Wyoming Liquor Commission and the Liquor Commission has determined that the applications is or are complete. Notice of the applications has been published in a newspaper of local circulation once a week for two consecutive weeks. Anyone present who wishes to speak to the council regarding the applications should approach the podium, state your name and mailing address, and then present your testimony. No one will be cross-examined, but those who approach the podium may be asked questions by members of the council. The issues in this hearing are set forth in Section 4-9 of the City Code, which provides that a license shall not be renewed if the city council finds from the evidence presented at the hearing that the welfare of the people residing in the vicinity of the license or permitted premises shall be adversely and seriously affected. The purpose of this chapter shall not be carried out by the renewal of a license or permit. The number, type, or location of existing permits meets the needs of the vicinity under consideration. The desires of the residents of the city will not be met by the renewal of a license or permit or that any other reasonable restriction or standard imposed by the city council will not be carried out by the renewal of a license or permit. I'll remind the council that the owner holder of a application for renewal of a license does hold a preferential right to that renewal application. After the council has accepted any testimony, it can then consider a motion to renew the licenses for all of those categories that I mentioned, Mr. Mayor. Is there anyone present who wishes to present any information to the council regarding any renewal of the licenses? Please approach the podium and if you would, state your name and address for us. There appear to be none. Mr. Mayor, with that, I would close the hearing.
Okay, thank you. Well, as we move on now to this motion, I'm told that Ms. Higginman has identified a conflict with license number 2409 and I appreciate that and so I guess I'll entertain a motion to approve these several licenses with the exception of 2409. We'll remove that for now, allow her to vote on those and then following that, we'll excuse her, we can vote on 2409. So I'll entertain a motion to approve these licenses without 2409.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Perks.
I'll second.
Sellers, seconding. If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved. And now we'll consider license number 2409, Joko LLC. Is there a...
I'll make that motion.
Motion to approve that. Mr. Sellers? Is there a second there?
I'll second.
Mr. Lynch? Seconding. Any discussion?
I like the name, Queen City Saloon.
Queen City Saloon, yep.
Evanston was the queen city of the mountains in her heyday, that's why.
That's correct. That's correct. If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved as well. Thank you. Now we'll, we have a consideration for petition of call-up or further review of an action of the Planning and Zoning Commission. What's our first step there, Mr. Harris? What do we...
Mr. Mayor, like the last meeting when we had a consideration for similar action, this matter involves the filing of a petition for call-up and further review of the action of the Evanston Planning and Zoning Commission on August 7th, 2023 regarding HE 193, the application of Tina Duran for a height exception to allow a fence to exceed the maximum height limitation of four feet within the front yard setback area for property located at 117 Citation Lane. The Planning Commission entered findings of fact, conclusions of law, and a decision in order denying the applicant a height exception for a front fence in a front yard setback area. Miss Duran, the applicant, timely filed a petition to call up the commission decision for further review. Planning Office pursuant to ordinance mailed the petition to each party who participated in the hearing, sent the findings and conclusions, and delivered copies of both to the city clerk and I believe the council have those in its possession. By law, the city council at its next regularly scheduled meeting is required to consider the petition for call-up, the findings, and any oral statements and decide whether to call up the decision for further review. The acceptance of a petition for further review requires the affirmative vote of five members of the city council. If such affirmative vote is made, the council will then set and advertise and conduct a public hearing on the petition. The purpose of the matter before the council this evening is to consider whether or not to call up the matter for further review. It is not a hearing on the petition itself and testimony and evidence is not considered. If the petition is not called up, the action of the Planning Commission will stand.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you. Obviously, I don't have a lot of information on this other than what Mr. Harris just shared with us. We have the documents before us that we can read. Again, this is just a decision to call it up to consider it as a city council. I guess I'll just entertain a motion to consider that, consider that call-up.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Mr. Welling, with a motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Lynch, seconding. Any discussion?
I just have two questions as we go forward.
Please, go ahead.
The only two questions that I have, because I don't have the background on this, is why? That would help in the decision on going forward. Why is, why did Ms. Duran ask for the height exception? And the other question is, what allows for the Planning and Zoning Commission to make this, hold to the four-foot rule on this where they didn't hold to the four-foot rule two weeks ago for the Dominion? Because that fence is a lot higher, as I recall. I just want to know the ins and outs and that.
And I don't know the answer to those questions. Those are probably valid questions, but they're also probably better suited for a hearing itself since we're just deciding to call it up. So those are valid questions, but I don't know that we have the answers to those denied, but we might, if it is called up. And so I don't know, those are good questions, but I don't, I don't know that we would entertain that particular night. The thing that I'll say, as we're in this discussion phase, is that, you know, I mean, I realize that this is perhaps a serious request on behalf of this property owner and I'm cognizant of that and I take seriously the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I appreciate their input, I appreciate their involvement. Occasionally, things, I guess occasionally things happen that require a little further review or something like that, so I just, I want to be cognizant of that, but at any rate, I don't know that I have any real strong feelings myself.
This would be a piece of property that would be within my ward, so I looked into it after receiving this and I think it definitely needs looked into further. I think there's already been a precedent set, so I think that was the worry in the planning and zoning, but I believe in this situation, there's probably a precedent that's already been set, so I think we need to look into it a little bit more, maybe ask some more questions. So I think this could be a possible situation where it would be okay to permit this, looking into it, looking at the property and the adjoining properties next to it, so.
Any further discussion? We've got a motion and a second to consider this call-up. Now, if this, if this vote is approved, then we will hear it and if this is not approved, then the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission stands, as you mentioned. We've got that right.
Mr. Mayor, that is correct.
Okay. So there's no further discussion? I'll call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Are there any opposed?
Opposed.
Mr. Perks opposing. Okay, so that is, that's called up then, I guess. Okay, I appreciate that. Abbott?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Now, like the last one, we need to pick a date.
Set a date, don't we? What's, what would be, now we'd set the, the next one is for next week. We used a work session for that. Do you...
I have to offer some information on that.
Okay.
We have to go through the advertising process for a public hearing and we can make the first meeting, regular meeting of the city council in October, if that would work.
Well, so you can make the third work?
We can make the third work.
Oh, if that's works, let's do that then. That, that sounds great, thanks, Dwayne.
October 3rd at 5:30.
October 3rd? Okay, thank you, appreciate that. So we'll set that hearing for October 3rd, 5:30. Okay, we'll move on to our consent agenda. We've got two items there, both street closures, activities that we've held in the past. Any, any concerns with those, any questions before we move on? I'll entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Mr. Welling, is there a second?
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Mr. Perks, seconding. Any discussion?
I attended that tailgate party last year. It was, it was amazing how clear that screen is and how fun it was to watch it out there, so.
You were the rowdy one outside the shop?
No, I was quiet and, and trying not to show my BYU shirt. Just kidding, I don't have a BYU shirt. Get beat up, but it was fantastic. I think everybody behaved and...
Excellent. Any further discussion? If there's none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Our consent agenda is approved. I'll go on to our unfinished business with ordinance 2305. Mr. Harris, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, ordinance 2305, an ordinance of the city of Evanston, Wyoming, annexing the real property or particularly described herein as requested in a petition annex submitted by GTR Property Holdings LLC, the Utah Limited Liability Company. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this matter is before the council on second reading.
Thank you. Mr. Higginman?
Yes, again, this is the 1.62 unincorporated island that we have within the city just off of Wasatch Road. It's one of three or so islands that we still have within the city that's proposed to be annexed and there have been no changes since first reading and Steph still recommends approval of that.
Excellent, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2305 on second reading.
I'll introduce the motion to pass.
Mr. Sellers, with a motion?
I'll second it.
Welling, seconding. Is any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved on second reading. Thank you. We'll go to new business, Resolution 2362. Mr. Harris, will you help us with that? Please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Resolution 2362 is a resolution of the city of Evanston, Wyoming, authorizing the acceptance and execution of a grant agreement with the United States of America through the Federal Aviation Administration to obtain additional grant funds to update the airport master plan for the city of Evanston, Uena County Airport, Burns Field.
Mr. Welling? Welcome.
Your Honor, council members, Gary Welling, 1301 Summit Street, representing the Evanston, Uena County Airport Joint Powers Board. This is, if you remember last time I was here, I think every time I come, you have a call-up from the Planning and Zoning, so I'm not to come next time. This is similar to the one we did a couple of weeks ago, just some additional funds from the FAA to complete our master plan that the FAA requires every 15 years on GA airports, gives us a kind of guide for the next 15 years of where we want to see the airport go, improve, where to build, those types of things. And this is just more money, I guess, to cover that master plan. This is, this and the grant agreement is for $255,000. The last one, I think, was 160, 180, something like that.
Excellent. Any questions from Mr. Welling before we move on?
I could read it as requested last time, but we don't have that kind of time.
You can hold up on those.
Is there introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce it, a motion to pass.
Mr. Lynch with a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Welling, seconding. Any discussion?
Just one question. In that 15-year plan, does it include any plans in case Salt Lake, Clark City gets to the Winter Olympics? Has that been in the board's discussion? Just out of curiosity.
You know, the last one didn't, didn't mention that. This one may, as far as planning for events or something like that.
I didn't know if it was on the radar yet or not.
That, that could be brought up in some public hearings, public meetings with, in regards to this master plan, they're gonna have upwards of four public meetings that people can come and look at the ALP or the Airport Layout Plan and suggest and, and comment on, on that plan, so we'll, we'll consider your, come and mention that. But they take into all considerations, but the last one didn't bring that up.
Any other discussion? If there's none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved.
Just on a, on a side note on that, it's an E sign, application like before, it'll go to the mayor first and then to Mr. Harris, then it'll jump to Mark Anderson, County Commissioner and his attorney, so, or our attorney.
Sounds great.
Thanks.
Thank you. We'll go to Resolution 2363. Mr. Harris, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2363, a resolution of the governing body of the city of Evanston, Wyoming, approving change order number three for the 18th, 19th, and West Summit Water Replacement Project in the city of Evanston. This requires introduction and motion to pass.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a change order number three for 18th, 19th Street Water Line Replacement Project. We're finding that this part of town was kind of the wild, wild west, there's a lot of water lines just everywhere. We're just, we're finding weird four-inch lines that run underneath the other lines and weird service lines that come off of weird laterals that we don't have in our records. So this was to do a exploratory excavation on 13th Street in Uena where we'd like, we found an old four-inch line that we want to abandon, but in order to do that, we got to find out where it's tied on to and so we had to do, do some work to vac, use a vector truck to suck that out and, you know, it's a little more expensive, but it's, there's a lot of, it's like a spaghetti bowl of water lines in there, so that was the best way to do it, to get in there and to look at that. And so this will help us to make decisions on, on abandoning some old four-inch lines that are running, it's running right underneath our line, so.
You getting it all figured out?
Yeah, we're, we're getting there. I think we kind of, we have a good idea now what we need to do, so this helps for sure. So it's just additional work to the contractor. Made sense to have them do the work than to have us do it, so.
Sure. Okay.
They're getting close and we have all the services tied on, doing a tie-on tomorrow and then one the next day and then we've got one more to do, once we get some valves put in and then, then we got to get the street buttoned up, but they're getting close, so.
Sounds good. Is there a introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce the motion to pass.
Mr. Welling, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lynch, seconding. Discussion?
So the only change is the back truck, is all I see, right?
Yeah, so it's $10,000, $10,500. Yeah, it's just for the back truck and the exploratory excavation, so. Again, it's a small percentage of the overall project, but it's still, everything adds up, so it's, it's expensive to do construction projects, as you all know, so.
I've had questions about the street. Are they gonna have that paved before winter hits or is it gonna be...
Well, yeah, so they are. They'll, they'll be coming and doing that at the same time that they're gonna be doing. It's the same company that's doing Aspen Grove Drive and Rockalo. We have kicked around the idea of maybe, because there has been so much patching of maybe we overlay the... maybe we overlay the street with some of our funds, and that's probably something I'll be coming and talking to you about here in a couple of weeks. But yeah, because there's a big pat, 12 feet of the road is basically tore up, and we have laterals coming to every house, does it make sense to just patch everything and not make it look nice, you know? Have a lot of seams and joints, and so that may be something that we would look at doing.
It would look better.
Thank you. It would look better, as you know, on Sage Street, we did that, and it kind of didn't, they still have to fix the asphalt on Sage Street too, but that's kind of what we did on Sage Street, so. Gordon and I have talked to the contractor, we'll, we have a meeting tomorrow, discuss that and kind of the cost implications of what that would look like if we used a little extra. I think the issue is that we can't use enterprise funds, we'd be using general funds to overlay that portion of the street.
Can we use, could we not use enterprise funds if it's a repair that way?
I would love to, if we could do it.
Logically, I could see where we have, wherever we tore up so much of that street.
It's because of the water.
Yeah, right. Got Gordon up out of his chair.
Just good news, Gordon, please.
That's why we have to patch him is because, like we've done with others, is it's, the enterprise funds is to patch what we've tore up. We can't redo the whole street because then we run into an auditing issue and Trudy gets on us, so.
Geez, Trudy.
No, it's just, it's a matter of using the right money for the right part of the project.
And I appreciate, I appreciate that. We want to make sure that we are using those funds properly, but I wonder if, I mean, the cause of the needed repair to the road was, you know, and so I don't know if that's an appropriate thing or not. Is it, Mr. Harris, do you have an opinion on that?
Mr. Mayor, I don't. I think, as the engineer pointed out, maybe we can take a look and see if we can get creative, but.
I think we need to get creative. If you take the city streets we've had in the past, City View, all these other ones that, you know, when we just patch it, it, and over time makes it worse.
And it doesn't really fix the road, it just kind of prolongs, so I don't know. I'm not questioning at all, I'm just saying if there's a way that we can use those enterprise funds, I think everybody in the room would just assume that's what we do, but.
Yeah, I agree, but.
Everybody but the owner.
Either, so.
I hear you.
We could also, we've kicked around and, this isn't decision time on this, but we kicked around putting off, like East Hayden, one of the overlays we have coming up to do this, to patch it, so we'll meet with them tomorrow and see.
Okay.
We did run under budget on our chip seal, like quite a bit, and so, and then I was told that they anticipate that we will run under on this project by maybe 100,000 to 150,000, just with line items.
Maybe we've got a little room.
We have some wiggle room for sure, it's just using the right money, audit time, the right, I mean, we'll use enterprise funds as much as we can for water, for street replacement work.
Excellent.
Makes sense. We want to rebuild the whole road, we just want to do it.
I think everybody.
...to seal it, so we, you don't get the freeze thaw cycles and damage.
And then tears the road back up, yeah.
I think it is a good idea to start incorporating.
Way somebody can be creative, I think it'd be worth looking into.
I think moving forward, we need to start incorporating overlays with waterline replacement projects, so that it's kind of all scheduled out and planned out a little better.
Well, I appreciate the work on it.
Did you just say you were under budget on a few of those things?
Yeah, so on the, yeah, on the chip seal, I believe we budgeted 300,000, and I believe we only awarded 150, 160 on that, and then we still don't know yet on Aspen Grove and Broccalo yet, but.
Nice, nice work, if you were under budget.
Yeah, it's, well, and it's, yeah, I don't know, I'll leave it at that. It's good, just, we estimate a little high sometimes when we look at projects, try to look at worst-case scenarios, so.
Well, we've got a motion and a second on Resolution 2363. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved, thanks. Resolution 2364, Mr. Harris, will you read that title for us, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 23, Resolution 2364 is a resolution of the governing body of the city of Evanston, Wyoming, authorizing the execution of an ARPA grant agreement with the state of Wyoming Office of State Lands and Investments to fund the design and construction of replacing waterline mains and hydrants along Sage Street, commonly known as the Sage Street Water Main Replacement Project. This resolution requires introduction and motion to pass.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Robinson?
This is the rare thing where we already have the project done. We went after the grant money most of a year ago. We approved to get the money. What we're doing tonight is just accepting the grant from the state so that they can start giving us, so that they can pay us that money, so.
There's absolutely no reason not to do this.
I wouldn't turn down 300,000.
Thank you. Is there introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce the motion to pass.
Mr. Perks, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Welling, seconding. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved. Thank you, sir. Comments from departments? Mr. Robinson, anything more for us tonight while you're there? Ms. Lim? Chief Rannish? Ms. Larson? Duane? Mr. Jacobson? Mr. Barker? Ms. Harris?
No, Your Honor.
Mr. Harris?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Public participation, is there anyone here that would like to address the council for any reason? There is not, we'll adjourn. Thank you, everyone.